Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, January 26, 2021. I have one meeting announcement for the beginning of the meeting and have some after. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the City Channel and live streamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube Channel. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. DeValle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President. Eight members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And as we join from our remote locations, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and our next order of business is proclamations, and we have one to be read into the reference from Councilman O'Connor, well, we have, and one from Councilman DeValle.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1100. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commends the future business leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda for its visionary approach for preparing students for the modern business world, and congratulates Central Catholic High School for its participation in a program to prepare their students, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 14 through the 21st, 2021 to be National Future Business Leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda Week in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman DeValle presents Bill Number 1102. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 2nd, 2021 to be Willa Kitty Chandler Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can we have a motion in a second?
Time moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion from the members on either? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proclamations are approved, thank you. And our next order of business, oh, we have a will of counsel also from Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman O'Connor.
Do you want it to an entirety?
It's up to the members.
I don't think that's necessary. Maybe the first, the first clause and then just the final two, if that's okay with Councilman O'Connor?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Whereas, a report entitled Murder and Extremism in the United States issued by the Anti-Defamation League revealed that in 2019, domestic extremists killed at least 42 people in 17 separate incidents nationwide, making that year the sixth deadliest on record since 1970, and the same report linked 90% and 81% of those murders to right-wing extremism and white supremacy respectively. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the council of the City of Pittsburgh are hereby committed to countering hate, extremism, misinformation, and disinformation through engagement with community leaders, governmental transparency, and public information sharing regarding efforts to fight extremism, and through the investigation and prosecution of those who commit criminal acts in a manner that is consistent with civil liberties protections, and be it further resolved that the mayor and the council of the City of Pittsburgh do hereby urge Pittsburgh residents, institutions, and corporations to join us in adopting anti-extremist values, condemning and rejecting misinformation, disinformation, hate, and extremism in all forms, and calling attention to these harms to keep us all safe.
Do we have anything from the members?
No, I'm good. I just wanna thank Councilwoman Strasburger and the mayor's office as well. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, likewise, I, I, I think the, the, well, will of counsel speaks for itself, and we're one of, I think, several cities that will be instituting these resolutions or wills of counsel jointly with mayors and city councils across the country in partnership with the Anti-Defamation League.
And did we have a motion in a second, Madam Clerk?
No, motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will counsel's approved. Thank you both. And now we'll move on to the next order of business, which is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of counsel state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity is not permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And the first speaker we have is Nancy Baines. Nancy Bane?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. I wanna thank you for, you know, taking the time to, to listen to some of my concerns today. I have spoken with Councilman Coghill, so he's aware of some of my concerns here, but I'm to the point where I'm very frustrated with the city. I wanna say that I've grew up here my whole life. I bleed black and gold, so I'm a little frustrated with what's going on right now. I have two issues. I know that you're aware of both of them, but I just wanna voice some concerns that I have. The first one is our roads. I, I live off of Ivy Glen during the Christmas season. We had that nine inches. They never came out, not in four days of us calling repeatedly. We shoveled the road ourself. There's a nursing home on that road, and when we called 311, the response was, you know, I said, what if an ambulance needs to get up this road? And they said, well, we'll respond to an ambulance. Okay, so you're not gonna respond to me as a taxpayer. And then this past Monday, I was stuck on Overbrook Boulevard. I called 311. I waited two and a half hours. I finally called Channel 11. The city did finally come out. The gentleman that was driving the truck was angry that there was cars all over the road, but there wouldn't have been cars all over the road if it would have been salted. And, you know, I tried to say that I couldn't move my car, and he goes, you ought to be glad that we didn't salt it. We've saved the city a million dollars by not salting the roads. That's not what a taxpayer wants to hear when they're stuck on a hill. So I'm frustrated with that. The second thing, the reason I was on Overbrook Boulevard is the city has a program for TNR, for feral cats. I've been doing it for seven years. And if you, if you Google feral cats Philadelphia, Phil, the city of Philadelphia has 500,000 feral cats. The reason that the city of Pittsburgh doesn't have this problem is because of people like myself, that give of their time and their money and their efforts to do this program, the TNR. But I have been tortured for seven years. I've had a load of gun pointed at me. I've had my tires slashed. I've been knocked down. I'm 64 years old. I work two jobs. One of them is just to fund taking care of these feral cats. I would think that the city of Pittsburgh would relish the fact that somebody's out there trying to help the city. When I started on Overbrook Boulevard, there were 30 cats. I have it down to three. Valera Avenue, I took 15 kittens off of that road, put them in my basement myself, and found homes for each and every one of them, and I've spayed and neutered the rest of the cats. The people that are on Valera just won't stop, though. They...
And our next speaker is Carl Redwood. Mr. Redwood?
Hi, my name's Carl Redwood. I live at 3039 Center Avenue in the Hill District. Morning. The City of Pittsburgh needs to approve the side yard purchase for homeowners in the Larmour neighborhood. The city is not honoring the commitment it made to the homeowners in the Larmour community. The city supported the development of the Larmour Vision Plan. The Larmour Vision Plan made a special effort to ensure that homeowners would be able to purchase side yards as part of the overall community development plan. Larmour homeowners have followed the city procedure for side yard purchase, but now it seems there's an unnecessary delay for them being able to acquire the property. Why is there a delay? I'm here to speak about the Larmour homeowners, but I think there may be a larger problem with how the side yard purchase program is being administered throughout the city. In Larmour, there's a group of homeowners who are not able to acquire the property in a timely manner. But in other parts of the city, it's probably just one homeowner at a time that may be denied or delayed from being able to acquire their side yard. It seems that now as the city and URA are trying to assemble a land bank, it's becoming harder for homeowners to acquire lots next to their home. It could be that the city and the URA are trying to hold land in the land bank for developers instead of allowing homeowners to acquire those properties around the city. The interests of developers has overridden the interests of homeowners, and this has happened in many different neighborhoods, not just Larmour. Is there a disparity in how the side yard purchase program is implemented? This is also an example of how the city will ignore community plans when big developers disagree. I encourage you to investigate the particular side yard purchase program in Larmour, but also to investigate whether the homeowners in other neighborhoods are being denied side yard purchases. Citywide, how many homeowners have applied for side yard purchase but been denied? The City of Pittsburgh needs to approve the side yard purchases for homeowners in the Larmour neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redwood. And our next speaker is Charles Gilchrist. Gilchrist? Charles? One more time, Charles Gilchrist. Nope, I don't see him. Okay, and our last speaker is Ms. Betty Lane. Betty Lane? I didn't see her either. Do you see her, Madam Clerk?
My name is Betty Lane. Can you hear me?
I hear you now, Ms. Lane. How are you?
Okay. My name is Betty Lane, a resident of Larmour for 50 years, past board member of the Larmour Consensus Group, and a current chair of the Larmour Community Watchers, which is the homeowners in Larmour. I'll send a copy of all the background information to council members later. I am here to speak about a problem within the Larmour community that deals with land uses. Within the Larmour Vision Plan dated 1970, it allows homeowners to purchase side lots. Myself and other officials devised a process for this to occur, and it was working until new leadership in the real estate department occurred. Currently, there are five homeowners who have paid $200 for closing cost items over two years ago without receiving any further directions. I served on a committee that included the real estate department, the URA, and the Larmour Consensus Group. We met monthly, and every month, there was no reporting on the status of these requests. I don't know why the real estate department representatives even showed up. So I became frustrated, and I went to the mayor's office, and I was given some information, but it did not result in moving this situation any further. I resigned from the committee two months ago after a representative from the URA who had never been involved in the side lot process stated on a Zoom call that the URA would be determining who gets land in Larmour. Now, the chair of the Larmour Consensus Group has attempted to move this forward without success, and therefore I returned to bring it to your attention on behalf of the homeowners who are the stakeholders in Larmour. You know, it is sad that they, when we first met on this, it was stated to us that the homeowners should wait till the developers get the land that they wanted, and then the homeowners could have what was left. That is ridiculous. They have been here through all of the neglect that has gone on. I have been here for 50 years, and the $30 million that we just got is the only investment that we've had in 50 years. And, and we had to fight to even try to get homeowners' resources out of that money. And now, they don't even wanna, want to acknowledge that the side yard program is one that was in our vision plan, our vision plan. And so we are looking for some assistance. We will send the background information to the council members so that they have, knowing step by step, how this all occurred. We, we have not gotten any assistance and help from the real estate department. From, we used to get some progress before this new group of people came into the department, and that has been like over possibly three years now. So we have the names of all the people who have not gotten it, the names of the people who have been denied, and we would like to have some action on that. Thank you for your, for your audience.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Have a good day. Seeing no further registered speakers, and we move on to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers, and we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess. Councilman Burgess?
No new papers, Madam President.
Chair of, he was Chair of Land Use, you are the Chair of Land Use and, or Chair of Urban Recreation. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Morning.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1093, Resolution Granting Unto Smallman Holdings LLC Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use of Their Own Costs and Expense to Extend and Renovate Existing Docks and Ramps Located at 1606 Smallman Street, Second Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill Number 1094, Resolution Providing for the Reimbursement to the Port Authority of Allegheny County for Costs Incur for Work on the Fallow Field Avenue Project, and Providing for the Payment of Municipal Incur Costs Not to Exceed $23,590.48.
And can we have Councilwoman Gross, Chair of, uh, Inner Governmental Affairs?
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Morning.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1095, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with the Mark Helmington Esquire of Trimbaugh, Kenny, Griner, and Kerr to provide legal representation as the solicitor of the Commission on Human Relations in an amount not to exceed $90,000.
And we have Councilman DeValle, Chair of Finance and Law.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning. And can we have Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services?
Good morning, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1096, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Receive Grant Funding from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to Assist in the City's Emergency Medical Services Efforts to Prevent, Prepare For, and Respond to the Coronavirus Not to Exceed $246,212.49. Bill Number 1097, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 382 of 2019, which authorizes the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City into an amended professional services agreement with Freedom Indeed LLC, Reverend Cornell Jones for Professional Services as a Group Violence Intervention Coordinator at a Cost Not to Exceed $327,465. Said agreement require amendment in order to change current and future funding sources to the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. Bill Number 1098, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 608 of 2019, Previously amended Resolution Number 515 of 2019, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City into an amended two-year professional services agreement with the Center that Cares for the Purpose of Implementation of the Pittsburgh Group Violence Intervention Street Outreach Program so as to switch current and future funding sources to the Stop the Trust, Stop the Violence Trust Fund. Bill Number 1099, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 308 of 2020, authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City into an amended five-year professional services agreement with Roll Call Technologies LLC, or a web-based secondary employment scheduling system in an amount not to exceed $853,925. Roll Call Acquired Cover Your Assets LLC, and is now the contracted entity instead of CYA. No other substantive changes to the terms of the agreement are required.
And Councilwoman, Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Councilwoman Strasburger? Councilwoman Strasburger?
No new papers, Madam President.
Yeah, I apologize. I skipped you, Councilwoman, Chair of Performance and Asset Management. And then Councilman Wilson has no new papers either. Thank you both. And myself, I have nothing as Chair of Committees. And we'll now move on to unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished business, business before council? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports of committee for final action, and we'll start with Councilman DeValle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman DeValle presents Bill Number 1088, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for January 20th, 2021, With an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1044, Court and Supplement in the Pittsburgh City Code Title I Administrative Article VIII Procedures by Adding a New Chapter 166, Donation of City Personal Property to Create a Policy for the Donation of City-Owned Personal Property. Bill Number 1045, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Accept a Donation from Workscape Inc. for $5,000 for Capital Investments for the Online Recreation Center Right-to-Tech Remodel.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, I just wanna thank Workscape because they are located in District Two, so I just wanna thank them for their donation. And seeing no further discussion, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. DeValle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Move on to Council Committee on Public Works, Councilman Coghill.
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1089, Report of the Committee on Public Works for January 20th, 2021, With an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1041, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Energy Development Authority's COVID-19 Restart Grant for the Installation of Electric Vehicle Charging Stations at the Second Avenue Parking Lot, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $189,403. Bill Number 1076, Resolution Vacating a Portion of First Avenue, a 30-foot Right-of-Way in the First Ward, Sixth Council District.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final passage, final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. DeValle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1090, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for January 20th, 2021, With an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1046, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017/2022 Capital Improvement Program so as to rename an organization at a fiscal conduit and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements. Bill Number 1047, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget, the 2019 CDVG Program, and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program so as to rename an organization at a fiscal conduit and authorize a subsequent agreement.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is, oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Moves us on to Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Urban Recreation.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1091, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for January 20th, 2021, With an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1066, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into a Community Partner Access Agreement with Voices Against Violence at No Cost for Use of the McKinley Community Center in order to Provide Recreational and Community-Focused Activities.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. DeValle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. That moves on us on to our last committee of the day is Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Inner Governmental Affairs. Councilwoman?
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1092, Report of the Committee on Inner Governmental Affairs for January 20th, 2021, With an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 767, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 5803 Center Avenue Residential Retail Development.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, bills now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mrs. Paul. Mr. DeValle.
Aye, sorry.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. That moves us on to our last order of business is the motions and resolutions, and I have some meeting announcements, and let me make those real quickly. Council will meet tomorrow morning on Wednesday, January 27th, for a standing committees meeting at 10:00 a.m. chaired by Councilman DeValle. On Thursday, January 28th, at 2:00 p.m., council will meet for an executive session on legal matters. To register to speak for tomorrow's council meeting, please fill, please fill out the sign-up form in its entirety on the council meeting webpage by 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by the registration deadlines. And with that said, we move on to comments, and I just want to, we have a member who is newly engaged in expanding his family, so Councilman O'Connor and his fiancee Katie were also ex- Councilman O'Connor and his fiancee Katie were all so excited, and, and I said I'd be the flower girl because I'm the appropriate size. I just want to say, congratulations. We're so excited for you. I think everybody is really happy.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, we actually do need a flower girl, so if you are signing up, that's perfect. I did tell Katie you were going to embarrass her, so she, I, I guess she'll pop into the screen. It's kind of early for us, but...
I wear my best sweatshirt for the occasion.
She has a sweatshirt, just in case.
How are you? Congratulations.
Oh, thank you so much. Yeah, we're very excited.
You're married, Councilman O'Connor. You're marrying the city, just so you know.
Katie, Katie, it's so glad to see you after hearing about you on the golf course time and time again. I was beginning to wonder if you even existed, to tell you the truth.
I do.
She does. She actually has a decent swing, Councilman, so you could be...
Is that right? Well, that's better than me then. But hey, Teresa, you said expanding the family. Does that mean we're having a baby or what's going on?
Oh, no. Whoa, whoa.
He's joining the, the, the city of Pittsburgh family.
We, we have a, we got a new dog. That's like, that's enough for right now. Yeah, yeah, that's enough. Well, thank you, Council President, for embarrassing us this morning, but no problem. Thank you very much.
Fine. Thank you for getting on, Katie, so early in the morning. Is there anything else?
No problem. We're good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything from other members? Seeing then, well, can I have a motion to excuse any absent members, approve the minutes, and to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Meeting's adjourned. Be safe, everyone.